We're going to come to order for this regular workshop meeting with the council. And we have an agenda for tonight's meeting. And I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify and say aye. All opposed? Next, we have minutes from the August 20th, 2024 regular meeting and consent items. There's two consent items on here.
Move approval for the August 20th meeting and the two consent items?
Second. Any further discussion here? Not all in favor, signify and say aye. All right, so we're going to go now to Fire Department. Our chief, T. Tomlin, will be doing handle of this item. This is our apparatus replacement schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you all for having me here tonight, Mayor and council, for this opportunity to talk about a proposed apparatus replacement schedule for the Fire Department. You know, it's kind of lost my train of thought there for a second, but anyway, I'll continue on. The importance of this is the service delivery standards. Those are the expectations that the public wants from us when we arrive on scene. It's the expectations we have as the Fire Department when we get on scene. And it's also, I'm having a tough time here. Excuse me one second. Got a loss of my train of thought. But as we know, the time is of the essence, especially when it comes to those first responder calls and those fire calls. Every delay in a minute is can be critical when somebody is unresponsive. Every minute that passes by, their chance of a good solid recovery diminishes greatly when it comes to those circumstances. Also with fire calls in today's modern fire environment, every 30 seconds, a fire doubles in size. So making sure that we get there quickly with the right apparatus and the right personnel based on the call we're going on is extremely important. There's also service delivery standards that come from ISO. Also to make sure that we have the proper personnel and equipment and also with accreditation standards. That also sets that to as well. I'm proud to say that we're right now, 90% of the time, we're getting to a call on scene in seven minutes and two seconds. That's from the moment somebody picks up the telephone and they answer at 911 till we get on scene in seven minutes and two seconds. That's well below our goal of seven minutes and 20 seconds. Another thing too is we want safe, reliable and similar apparatus. Safety, just because mechanically safe, we also want it structurally safe. And that's not just for our personnel. It's also the people that we share the road with when we're responding to these calls. It also has to be reliable. As you know, we talked about with Station 4, once a fire station opens, it never closes. Once we put an apparatus into service, it's expected to start and function every time. It's a 24/7 piece of equipment. And also too, we want to have similar apparatus. That helps with the maintenance, with the mechanic. We can stockpile replacement parts that are similar that will fit on multiple apparatus. And also too, with the four stations and people traveling from station to station, when they go from Station 3 to Station 4, Station 4 to Station 2, they're riding on a similar piece of equipment. The pump panel looks the same. The equipment is stored in the same places. And then when you're on emergency scene, if they're coming from another engine, our goal is to strip the first engine to make sure that we get everything off of there. That way, if somebody needs to leave and answer something else, they know where everything's at. It's similar on every piece of apparatus that we have. Strategic budgeting. These apparatus, this is a 10-year plan. It's just like the CIP. Some of these apparatus cost more than a capital improvement projects. When we're talking to the million, $2 million. Compliance and innovation. There are federal standards that we have to meet. There's emission standards, things like the DEF systems. There's OSHA standards that we have to meet for safety and innovation when it comes to these apparatus too as well. We also need a service or reserve fleet. When an apparatus goes out of service for maintenance or it breaks down, we have to have a piece of equipment ready to go that has the same type of equipment so they're not tearing equipment off of the truck to put on this truck to go back into service. All of that is in a delay. It could take up to 45 minutes, an hour, two hours to make this switch if you have to move an apparatus. But we keep our stocked with that equipment so it's ready to go. It's just a matter of them changing over their gear, their air packs, and they can get right back into service. And also, we get ISO credit for having these fully equipped reserve apparatus. Next slide, please, Lisa. Some of the challenges that we're facing with these apparatus is our aging apparatus. You saw in the report, we have one from 1994. They were still utilizing today. With that problem, part availability when it comes to these older apparatus, some of them, we're having problems finding components for seat belts just because they're so old and outdated. You know, the gear we wear is heavy. It's got a lot of buckles. It's got a lot of straps. We tear up seats. Simple things like replacing a seat in a fire apparatus is a challenge because of that stuff. We put a lot of wear and tear on this equipment because like I said, it never gets a break. Actually, we have somebody on staff that's can actually fix the seats. So we're lucky that we have somebody that's on shift, that's a firefighter, that can do that type of work so we can get those seats replaced and back into service. Repair times, trying to find the parts. There's a delay in the repair times getting these things in. Another thing too is in order to kind of combat this, we do a weekly, every week on all of our apparatus. They go through, they check all the fluids, they make sure it's operating like it's supposed to, oil, gas, radiator, windshield wipers, lights, everything. They make sure it's functional like it's supposed to. We used to do that on a Saturday. And when we had an issue, they would have to call the mechanic. Either he would have to come in on the weekend or try to troubleshoot it over the phone or they would just take it out of service. So what we've done is we change when we do that. We actually do our weeklies now on Monday morning. So if there's an issue, the mechanic can go ahead and put eyes on it right then. If it's something he can fix, he'll go ahead and take care of it. But if a part or something like that needs to be ordered, he can go ahead and get it ordered and get it coming so we can get it replaced and back into service. Another thing too is trying to find repair facilities. When there's something that he can't do himself, then you can find somebody else that can do this type of work. Our ladder one was recently out of service. If we have to get work on the hydraulics or these parts that were on the engine, you can't find a facility big enough to house it. They have to do this work outside. So rain affects that, high temperatures, cold temperatures, all of that kind of stuff affects the time with the maintenance. The increasing service demand, just the amount of calls we go on, the inspections we do, our day-to-day operations, training requirements, all of that stuff adds to the increasing service demand. We do engine company inspections at the shift level to help with our prevention division, and those are becoming more and more. And the community, the community stuff we do, you know, where we apparatus visits, fire prevention programs, those types of things are increasing greatly too. And I talked about the rising costs. I'll mention Engine 3 that we have that we just ordered back in 2021 and received in 2022. That was a $650,000 piece of equipment. If we bought that truck today, it would be a million dollars. So just in those few years, those costs have gone up greatly. And also too, meeting the federal emission standards. The delay in the construction of these apparatus is actually hindering us on Ladder 1, not with the timeline, but we actually had to make a spec change because the engine that we had spec in that ladder did not meet federal emission standards for when we would have it delivered. So we'd have to upgrade. We did upgrade to a Packer motor, which was a $100,000 cost add-on to that truck because of those federal emission standards and that long timeline. Talking about the extended manufacturer times, pre-COVID, you'd get a truck in 12 to 18 months. As a matter of fact, when we order Engine 3, our old Engine 3 was in an accident, we had a truck built from scratch before we had that apparatus repaired. Now, post-COVID, you're looking anywhere from a 24 to 48 month construction time based on what company you go with. That's just where everybody has kind of gotten caught. And the same thing, you're used to that 12 to 18 month timeline. Everybody is ordered in advance, going ahead and getting these stuff because of the challenge and then the COVID. So now it's created a backlog with all these apparatus. And then the limited manufacturers, there are a lot of smaller truck companies. They're kind of getting bought up by these huge conglomerates. They still may have the logos, but there's only so many places you can go to to order these type of apparatus. I mean, Ford and Chevrolet used to make fire engines. They don't make them anymore. I was actually talking to the chief of Winston-Salem, Chief Mayo. They ordered a KME tiller truck. When they went to go pick it up, it had three different truck parts from three different truck companies. Where they were operating and building all these different types of trucks out of one shop, they basically made a Frankenstein fire engine. So they said, you're going to have to change that. We're not accepting that truck as it is, but just kind of scary to hear. The replacement schedules, we looked at that to see what everybody else is doing. Of course, we've offered NFPA before. The 1900 recommendation is a 15-year frontline service for those apparatus and a five-year reserve. We looked at other departments around us, some close to our size, New Bern, Kinston, Little Washington. I left it off of here, Goldsboro. We talked to them. None of them have an apparatus replacement plan. It's something that they're all looking to do. They just haven't put it down yet. Goldsboro kind of has one in pencil, but nothing that's been adopted by their council. They kind of just order them on an as-needed basis. Our larger metropolitans like departments, Charlotte, Fayetteville, Winston-Salem, they all follow this NFPA standard or actually do better than that NFPA standard. Charlotte, Fayetteville, they replace their engines every 10 years to 12 years and their aerial devices every 15 years. And Raleigh's actually proposing to move theirs to 10 years and 10 years for engines and aerials. Asheville is the only one that has any type of program with their fleet that it takes in mileage, how often it's out of service, wear and tear, age of the truck to kind of factor in the replacement schedule too as well.
Well, they're going to climb mountains probably as hard on those things, I would imagine. And brakes.
Other options, stuff we've done internally as a department is we've looked at our apparatus distribution off the city. You know, some stations are busier than others with different types of calls. As you know, as part of the ISO, a few years ago, we moved our ladder and switched our rescue to kind of cover that call demand and have a better coverage throughout the city. So we can continue to model those things and look at maybe moving apparatus here and there to kind of to ease the burden on them when it comes to these years and miles and wear and tear. And the utilization of the squads. We're fortunate. Thank you for what you all done for salaries and benefits, that we're having a better retention that we've had in years past. And with that, we have people that are staying, they're being able to be promoted, that are stepping up to drive these apparatus so we can put them in service more often. We also interpret our call data. We look at trends. We'll take Station 1, for example, where Town Center Apartments is. Used to, that was a hotspot for us. Now, all of those calls have moved more to that Highway 17 corridor with the hotels and some of these newer developments that are coming up. So when you take 700 units out of a district, it's certainly changed the types of calls that you go to on a regular basis. And we're also looking at hot zones. Like I said, you have the areas around 17, the hotels, Western Boulevard. Most of our calls are right up and down those main thoroughfares. And then we've also looked at, this is something that we're exploring, is a larger response area for our squad coverage. We've looked at call times when we're the busiest, especially for our first responder calls. We're looking at a window from about 9:00 in the morning till 9:00 in the evening. And we're in discussions right now of possibly providing coverage to a larger area with these squads, given that they can make it in a reasonable amount of time and provide the service that they need. So we're not just putting all the wear and tear on those engines and maybe moving it to the squads more. Next slide. We've also looked at apparatus refurbishment. That's uncommon. I don't know of another department that does it. Even if you did that, you were looking at least a year to get that truck turned around. And all they're going to fix on it or replace is the motor, the transmission, the pump, paint, vital and valves. It doesn't touch the chassis. It doesn't touch the suspension or it doesn't touch the electrical, especially nowadays with all the computers that are on these apparatus. If you're not touching that kind of stuff, you're just leading to more and more problems down the road. And then it's really not cost feasible. When you're looking at $500,000 plus for a fire engine or 3/4 of a million dollars for an aerial apparatus, you're almost exceeding over your 40% for a cost of a new one. We have this proposed replacement schedule. We've kind of looked at that NFPA recommendation. That 15-year, we're kind of looking at a 15 to 20-year frontline apparatus and then still utilizing it for a reserve status when it's done. We're looking at FY '26, this next fiscal year, replacing Engine 1. Next fiscal year, replacing Rescue 1. We have a little flexibility with those two trucks. It may flip-flop just depending on need and use. And there's also some other things we can do with maybe moving the rescue around to kind of ease the burden on it. We're looking at replacing Quint 4 in FY '28, Engine 2 in '33, and Engine 3 in FY '35. Now, what we're factoring in on that is even though that's FY '26, with the current build times, we're still expecting that three to four-year build time. So we'd still get it out to that 17, 18, 19-year mark. And these trucks are averaging anywhere from 6,000 to 10,000 miles a year, just with normal use and responding to calls. Next slide, please. Some of the opportunities that we have, apparatus manufacturers are forecasting a 5% to 6% increase every year with the cost of these apparatus. When you get up into the millions of dollars, that adds up very quickly. I gave you the cost of Engine 3 compared to two years ago to now. It's astronomical. But we have found that you have prepaid discounts with the apparatus that we're ordering right now, which is Pierce. They can give you a discount for 25%, 50%, 75% or 100% prepaid discount. If you were to prepay for a million dollar engine, a $1.5 million rescue this day, you'd get anywhere from $100,000 to $150,000 back for the prepayment. We almost got $300,000 back for the prepayment of Ladder 1. So it knocked that much off the cost. It also secures our place in line for orders. You can go ahead and get that in and go ahead and have our spot in the line so when it's time to go, we can get up there, we can do the pre-build and they can go ahead and get rolling on it. And then it's that strategic budgeting concept. Capital Improvement Plan, that's a 10-year forecast. We're looking at a 10-year forecast here. It's not just fire apparatus that we have to replace. You know, things come up in a matter of a nick of time. Station 4 is a perfect example. You know, that opportunity came available. We were able to get it done and get it built, but that wasn't something that we were forecasting. So this allows us for that strategic budgeting. We've looked at some funding strategies for this. As you know, the county started beginning last year, starting awarded us the 3 cent on the property tax. So they gave us that money the beginning of the next fiscal year in between July 1st and July 30th. This past year, we received $1.3 million from the county that we allocated to Station 4. Next year, we're expecting about $1.4 million from the county. Part of that agreement for to do this was it had to go to equipment, personnel, apparatus or stations. So it has to be utilized for those certain things. Also too, we're going to continue to explore grant opportunities. As you know, in the past, we've come before you and asked to respond to or reply for the AFG grant. We've been unsuccessful every year, but we were blessed when it came to Ladder 1 that we were able to get that grant with the state, which covers the cost for the apparatus and will actually cover the cost of putting the equipment on the apparatus. So that was truly a blessing. And also, the strategic purchase should allow us to take advantage of those prepaid discounts. But that's all I have. If there's any questions or anything I can elaborate on or...
This might be just a dumb question, common sense, but I would assume that some of these, you know, I'm looking at the list of apparatus and seeing the least four that are over that 15-year mark already, some by a significant amount. I'm assuming as a new one is purchased, one of the older ones would cycle into the reserve and one of these very, very old ones might get dropped off. Is that the plan?
Yes, ma'am.
What do you do with old ones, sell them?
You can sell them. I was looking at prices on Gov deals. You can get anywhere from $5,000 to $60,000 for them.
Well, we donate one to the college.
Yes, sir. How does that ride in that truck?
It's hard to get up into it.
Yes, sir. That was a rough ride, piece of equipment. But yeah, there's those opportunities. We can donate them or we can sell them. So there's always somebody out there looking for them.
One of my questions. So if it takes up to 48 months to get one, you know, technology changes a lot. So if you place your order, how does that work during the design process? Like, I mean, is it just sitting in a queue? And then once it gets that point, if things come up, can you make certain changes if you want to, to, you know, follow technology as it comes along?
You can. As a matter of fact, before you go up, you, we have our design. It's something that we like with Engine 3. That was designed by our firefighters. You have a pre-build conference. So you actually go over every single nut and bolt on that thing to make sure that that's exactly like you want it. And then they can show you other things that they can sell on top of it or some innovations that were made. So you have the opportunity to be flexible.
I guess I was just thinking like you don't want to pay for something now, right? And then you get technically a four-year-old new, you know, truck when you're done. So that was, that was my thought.
You have a pre-build and a post-build conference.
How many rush trucks do we have now?
Rush trucks? We just have one.
Just one?
Yes, sir. We have the F-250 with the skid unit in the back.
We just have one of those.
Yes, sir.
What do you use mostly on your medical calls?
Right now, mostly it's engines. Like I said, we're getting those squads into service more and more. I think last year, the squads answered a total of 668 calls. This past fiscal year, they answered over 1,100.
That's the majority of your traffic, right?
Yes, sir. That's about 65% of the calls we run.
Chief Tomlin, I have two questions for you. So when, when the city purchase a new vehicle, what type of warranties or extended warranties come with those that we can get? The extended life shelves of these vehicles and repair them at a reasonable cost?
The apparatus have a one-year warranty on them, you know, bumper to bumper. Some of the components of it, like the booster tanks on these apparatus, the one we have for Engine 3 has a lifetime warranty on it. So some of those components are longer. I'm sure just the regular everyday fleet equipment, apparatus, squads, stuff like that is probably that year warranty. But we also have a full-time on-duty mechanic that's available for us that he does an excellent job maintaining this stuff. And then it's the stuff that the men and women do on a day-to-day basis. It gets cleaned every day. Like I said, it gets checked every day and then weeklies are done on it every, every week.
And then my last question, you indicated that there was a grant that you applied for, but you were not the recipient of that grant. So was that association or entity able to tell you or to showcase what were the weaknesses that once you apply again, you can put supporting data to make your grant more solidified and strong the next time you submit it?
No, ma'am. You don't really get any feedback from those types of things. Part of the challenge too with those grants is how the application period and what they say that they're looking for. Sometimes the application starts, you go ahead and say, we want to apply for this. You go ahead and do it and they'll say, well, our priority is this, this and this. And what you applied for may be low on their priority list. It's very competitive too.
The $1.4 billion, is that what you said you get from the county now?
Yes, sir.
That's your handle?
It is. I'm sure they can take it away at any point, but that's what we expect going forward.
Have you, do you use this? Do you dedicate this towards any of this?
Yes, sir. That was one of our funding strategies. Like I said, the one we got this past year, we had earmarked for Station 4, but some of the opportunities to replace these apparatus is to utilize that money for that.
In the current year's budget, that money is actually used in lieu of some other tax revenue to balance their budget. So I mean, in other words, right now, it's incorporated in our budget. Last year, we did put it towards Station 4, but this year, it's part of the operating, annual operating cost.
Did you ever, do we adopt a schedule replacement of your breathing apparatus too?
No, sir, we have not. You know, that's in this fiscal year budget. So, but we still have that lifetime warranty with these. They usually last about 10 years, but this has the lifetime warranty where they'll come and repair it for the life of that apparatus.
Part of the schedule, Mayor, is that, you know, when Chief Tomlin talks about the equipment replacement schedule, it's not as cumbersome, even though there may be a lot of apparatus throughout the city, but the vehicle and equipments in the rest of the city typically don't carry the price tag that these, that these engines, ladders, quants, squads carry. And just like with the breathing apparatus, the SCVAs, when you're looking at that many apparatus and you're looking at a million dollars to do the replacement, we need to have this as part of our planning strategy, which is why the replacement schedule is so important. Not only is the council looking for this year, if we were paying for everything in a year and getting it at the back end of the year, I think it would make it a lot easier. You're paying for it now. Theoretically, we're getting it in 36 to 48 months. I really think 36 would be a best-case scenario on multiple vehicles now. So that makes it a little challenging, especially for a city council. And we talk about not tying the hands of a future council. With this schedule, you're adopting the schedule and if you prepay, theoretically, you're encumbering that for another council, but you're also using the schedule so that we stay ahead of it. Because part of chief's challenge now is when one of these pieces of equipment goes down, it goes down for a time period that we don't know. If it goes outside of Captain Brown's ability to do the repair on it, then we're sitting in limbo and we still have to service our people. I think one of the best things that Chief Tomlin talks about is the amount of time that it takes to respond to a call. It does not belong to the Fire Department. It belongs to the person they're responding to. And so as I always tell them, knowing that I could go down at any point, I want them to be there faster. 702 seems like a long time to me. I think I need them there a little quicker. So that's a challenge that we talk about, how long it's going to take him to get to me when I'm, when I'm down. So we want to make sure that you're thinking about this because as we go into planning for next year, if you're going to appropriate, then you need to know because you're going to ask this question. Well, if we appropriate money for this engine, then what do we have to do next year? And it goes back to your, your previous statement, Mayor, of how do we sustain that? We have to have the plan. And so going through this now is a critical part of, of our success to get it back to the council. So you're thinking not only the one year, but you're thinking 10 years of how we're going to make it.
Cost is coming one way or the other, so it makes sense to be aware and be planning ahead and get in front of it as much as is possible with the 36 to 48 month delivery time. That makes it tough.
And there's always the chance that those times can improve. There's always a chance that those times can work, give work.
If you know somebody looking to get into a business of building engines, that would be nice if you could send them our way sooner rather than later. But other than that, you look at it, just today, Chief Tomlin sent me information about those responses that you're talking about, Mayor, and the vehicles they're using to respond and the personnel they're, they're sending. And so those are, those are strategies that Chief and his team are looking at constantly to figure out, how do you maximize the personnel, the resources and maintain the apparatus? Because when you look at that sheet that Chief gave us, you're looking at miles, you're looking at hours, you're looking at years, but you're also looking at maintenance. And you can't see that on the schedule. You can't see the maintenance that they're doing. You just have to know that the work they're doing is keeping it ready to respond to whatever we go to.
Do you have a can get you one by Diesel Brothers? That'd be cool. Just saying.
Is there such a thing as a boilerplate engine? There was a lot of discussion about that years ago. What was the company up in Pennsylvania that manufactured them?
Bethlehem Steel? You're not talking about Bethlehem Steel, no?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, sir. I'm not familiar with a boilerplate engine. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But I can find out for you.
Are those cheaper, Mr. Bittner? Because we'll do some research if they're going to cost a little bit. If there's a buy one, get one half off deal.
Well, how, how much your quint for? Isn't that pretty much a standard vehicle?
No, sir. It's, you know, it has the ladder on top of it.
Okay.
So, it is more expensive. So, if we were to replace that today, it'd be almost $2 million.
But you don't take that. You got 70,000 miles on that since 2013.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, I did real quick, if y'all don't mind. While we were cleaning out Station 4, I found the schematics for old Engine 3, which is now Engine 7, that we still have part of our fleet, and some memos from Mr. Bittner to Chief Barker.
Oh, wow.
To discuss taking bids for it and then what type of pump they were going to put into it and the specs on the lights. So, it was just neat.
Did they discuss the boilerplate?
Y'all been in there about boilerplate? That's why you probably flat-footed.
What was the year?
This was in 1993.
Oh, wow.
How'd that conversation go in '93?
Wonderful.
Price tag was a little lower.
We do have one, one comment. The squads will not be part of this replacement schedule, would it? They, they would be like other regular, other regular city vehicles as part of that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they, they're.
Right. They're more, they're more, a little more run-of-the-mill rather than.
They're standard vehicles that they put packages in.
Gotcha.
That's the F-250s.
Yes, sir. The crew cab F-250s. Yes, sir.
And, you know, they're also used like the battalion chiefs operate in the same chassis, so to speak, just have different equipment in them compared to what a squad has.
We, we talked years ago about, about having those running more to save some wear and tear on the, on the big, high-dollar equipment. I know you're working that way and continue to look at it, so.
And that was, you know, we did over, you know, diesel squads and with those emission standards, we were having trouble with those things because we're just doing those short runs. You know, that's made for long-distance runs. So, we actually swapped them out with parks and got gasoline F-250s and we've had a lot, a lot better results.
Do they have no EV yet?
They have them out there. As a matter of fact, Charlotte.
Maybe whatever you're talking about, the boilerplate, the EV and something there.
So, they do have some electric fire engines, so all battery-operated.
I'd be a massive rider, juice on the way to a call.
Can you imagine the weight that would put on the ass? The truck's heavy enough. Battery weight would shred the pavement.
Just a longer extension cord. When you get there and you plug it in, you need a hydrant and outlet. That's what we asked for.
Some solar panels in here.
Right. Just put them on the truck.
You can add that million dollars a mile repaving to the cost of that vehicle.
There's not an accident item at this time, Mayor, but we are going to bring it back as we get into more discussions on the budget planning.
Shall we move on to the credit card process?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Is this how we're paying for the new equipment?
On credit cards, yes.
3%.
18%.
I'm not too sure about that.
24%.
Good evening, ma'am and council. I am here this evening to discuss credit card processing. As it relates to the ERP implementation, I know we've talked about several times that as we're going through the process, we'll be evaluating our business processes. And in the area of customer service, that would include our customer portals that we have, mostly our utility billing customer portal, and then as well, bill increment and inspections, any type of customer portals that the customer make payment, makes payments through. Our different payment options that we have, what payment options do we currently have? What can we add? Electronic bill presentment, which is how we deliver the monthly bills to our customers. The different payment processors that we have, will we continue with the payment processor that we're currently using or go out for bids and try to find someone different, maybe with better rates or different options that they offer? And then convenience fees, which is why we're here this evening to talk about what they are and what we're currently doing and what we might switch to. So, right now, I just, I wanted to go through the customer, the payment options that we do currently have to try to give you a little bit of an understanding about our credit card fees and where they come from. It's really not just credit card fees, although we refer to it that way. And we have a wide variety of payment options with, it gets a little bit confusing at times. But one of our main payment options that we have is our customer portal. That's basically the city's website. And on that portal, customers can either choose to create an account or do a one-time payment. They can pay by credit or debit card, electronic check, Venmo, PayPal, PayPal Credit, and Amazon Pay currently. You, they can't, if you're doing a one-time payment, you don't have to have a login, but with the other options with the check, Venmo, PayPal, Amazon, all of that, obviously you would have to have a user account and you could pay that way. Right now, about 79% of our credit card payments do go through the website. 32% of those people actually use the customer portal where they're logging in and paying that way. And then 27% have a scheduled payment. So, they've set themselves up on autopay some way through the portal. And then about 20% are just doing the one-time payment where they don't have to log in. They just put their account number and it's real quick and easy for those people that don't want to deal with usernames and passwords. Then we have our SMS Pay, which is a text payment. That is where you, again, through the customer portal, you enroll. You get a text during the month that says your bill is this amount and you basically type "Pay," and it pays your utility bill for you using information that is saved in the customer portal in your wallet. So, another very convenient option. Just blowing your mind?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, just wait, it gets better.
I've tried, I've tried the IRU Pay and it doesn't.
We have what is called a smart PDF, which is again, something you can enroll in, in the customer portal where a PDF is emailed to you. And again, it's like you click on the PDF and you just pay. It's like magic. And it again is attached to your wallet in your online portal. Then we have Walmart Bill Pay that customers can go to Walmart and they can pay there the fee. This is an option that actually doesn't cost the city any amount of money at all because the customer's paying it to Walmart. Walmart is charging a fee for that service. I think it's $2, but the money, the payment still comes to us. The customer doesn't have to log on to a website. They don't have to come into City Hall, so it's convenient if they're there doing their shopping. We don't have a lot of customers that use that, but we do have about 10 to 15 customers a month that pay their bill that way. But it is an option out there. And we have our IVR, which is the phone system. You know that if you call in utility billing right now, you do reach an automated phone system. You can press a zero to get a customer service agent, but you can access all of your account information that way and you can pay over the phone using a debit or credit card or an electronic check. Then we have what we call bank draft or ACH payment. It, it gets a little confusing because that's really what the, you can set up for electronic check, autopay within the customer portal. But the bank draft or ACH payment is really the older method of payment where the customer's actually set up in our software system directly to their bank account and we process a file each month to the bank in ACH file and withdraw the account that way. Currently, we only have about 980 customers left on that and it is potentially one of those options that will go away. As you move more towards the payment processors and the electronic payment options, software companies are doing less of this because it requires that, right now, we're storing that information on our system, which is really something that you don't, you know, necessarily want to do.
You've got HIPAA, PCI compliance you have to deal with.
Yeah. So, you, that is something that, over the years, we've decreased quite a bit. In 2018, we, we had like almost 2,400 and now we have less. So, really, it's just customers that have been settled with us for a long time now. Now, if you come into the office or you call and you say you want to enroll in an autopay, you'll be directed to the website to set it up that way.
It moves some liability away from the city and toward the processor. That's a good thing.
Yeah. And it provides some more customer service to the customer in the way that they can log into their portal and see their accounts and they can change their account information if they need to. And sort of it, it kind of puts it more on them. And then, of course, we do still have the office that people can come into. We do have some customers that still come in and they pay by cash, check, money order. We love to see those people. They can pay by mail. They can do the, we have the Dropbox at the end of the building. Of course, you know, during cutoff times, typically, we see more traffic in the office. We still have a lot of customers that come in, although you can set up new service online, they'll still come in and pay their deposits and things like that in the office with a credit card. And then we have bank bill pay, which is where you go onto your bank and you schedule an online bill payment that way. That is another option that really is no cost to the city. We receive electronic file each day with those payments and it's another convenient. If a customer is familiar with their online banking software and comfortable with that, they can schedule their payments that way. And these are the exciting options that are coming soon. We're adding a few more. Google Pay, which is very similar to Amazon Pay and Apple Pay. If you like to just, as I said, click that little button on the side of your phone two times and it magically pays everything. And then Scan to Pay, which I feel is, is exciting because it is an option for, not everyone does have a credit or debit card and I think sometimes we tend to forget that. This is an option for those customers that still do use cash, that don't have access to other ways to pay. And so, pretty soon, probably within the next few weeks or month or so, they'll be able to do what is called Scan to Pay. So, what that means is that they can go on their, on the customer portal and say, "I'm going to pay by cash." And they'll go to a Walgreens, Dollar General, CVS, any of those places, they'll be able to pay with cash. And then those places will send us the payment. And it's like, all like magic in the background.
I've tried, I've faxed money, you know, scanned my money in and then faxed it.
No, isn't it working? Well, maybe we'll need, you need some one-on-one assistance. We'll try to, we'll try to figure it out for you.
Just don't copy the money.
Well, I didn't, I, I had, well, I made a copy of my file showing that I paid.
So, this is an option that is great customer service-wise. And again, it's cash-based, so there's no fee to the city to do that. So, but those are coming soon. And this slide, I just wanted to sort of show where we were with electronic payment adoption. If you'll remember some years back, we really pushed customers to electronic payments. You know, at the time, we talked a lot about the increasing number of customers. We weren't increasing staff. How can we encourage people to pay electronically because it's easy and it, there's no, you know? At the time, didn't seem like a lot of cost to the city seemed like the way to go. And so, this just is meant to show how our payments have changed over the years since 2015. I mean, you can see a huge decrease in the number of cash payments while you can see credit cards are increasing dramatically and the, the number, this is the number of payments annually.
Have you, the, the, the number of bad checks, bad accounts, has that gone down dramatically using this?
Well, it, it, the number of bad checks has gone down, but there are some, like, I will tell you, electronic checks, those can still be returned. So, like last month, we had, I think, 38, I saw was the number 38 returned to electronic checks, which maybe is a little less than when we were, you know, when we didn't take electronic checks. We, we used to use a thing way back called telecheck, I think is what it was called, but they sort of ran your check electronically right then. Now, it's a little bit different. The checks can still be returned. Of course, we do charge a fee for that, so there's really no additional cost to the city for that. It's just a little bit of an inconvenience because obviously we have to reach out to the customers. Sometimes we do end up issuing door knockers, so that's a trip for metering. Credit cards, there can be chargebacks, you know? You and I are roommates and I pay the utility bill and then I move out, so I call the bank and say, "I didn't authorize the charge." Well, they're going to take the money back from us. You know, it's really on us because we're going to, we're going to show, you know, who made the payment and that it was to this bill and they put the information. But most of the time, the person, just like you or I, if we file a chargeback, you know, we typically get our money back, so they're usually going to err on the side of the customer. We do charge for that as well. So, I think right now, we're recovering. They charge us, I think, $9.95 for a return charge, a chargeback on a credit card, but we do get those. Maybe not at the same rate that we were getting back in the day when people wrote back checks, but it can still happen. Check or money orders, those numbers represent mostly, checks are a little tricky because now the mail checks that come in, we treat them as a wire because we scan them and send them in a file to the bank. So, they're kind of, in 2023, the checks can be, are lumped in with the wires. But we, you can still see that.
Still dropping.
Every, everything is dropping really, other than the credit card payments. I mean, that's just the preferred method of most people to pay.
And credit and debit card.
Credit and debit, mhm. And then our miscellaneous payments, that is just sort of everything else we do, like debt settlement, non-cash payments, just random payments. And those increase a little.
What are recreation payments? Is that where you have fun paying?
Yes. The recreation payments I did want to mention are excluded from most of this discussion because I didn't want to further complicate things and they use a different software with a different payment processor with different rates and everything. And I felt like it would just make the conversation even more confusing than it is with all of the other payment types we'll go through.
Well, we set a new system, the new computer system. Will all that be integrated into one? So, you won't have two different from recreation?
Recreation is not part of the current phase of the ERP, phase one or two, but it is a possibility that maybe later somewhere, the cash receipt part may interface. We did talk about that as we were going through the process, but right now, I don't think they have a plan to change necessarily.
Like the city's that one, this large portal, like, like for us, you know, we have my son in there plus pay the water bill. If you just do it all at one stop, you know, that's, I was curious.
Oh, yeah. See, yeah, most likely, it would probably still be.
Separate.
Separate portals. Yeah. Next slide, please. So, what are the payment process and fees that we pay? They're, they're obviously fees that the city pays monthly. They're transaction-based, which means they're different amounts based on different transactions, different types of bills, different amounts. We do receive a discounted fee for utility bills, for most utility bills, which we'll talk about that a little bit more, but it's not all of them. There are maximum transaction limits for the fees. So, we have an overall maximum transaction of $25,000. You can't pay more than that. But then even within that, there's $1,500 increments. So, if we pay a dollar per, for, a dollar for each transaction, let's just say, we're going to pay a dollar for every $1,500. So, if you pay $3,000, we're going to pay $2. So, that's sort of how it's set up. And then the payment process and fees are made up of multiple fees. There's merchant fees, gateway fees, processor fees, PCI compliance fees, and all of these things are sort of combined to, to get to what they're charging us. I can't see far and I can't see close, like struggling, you know? So, I'm trying to look at you guys now. I can't see you, but I've got to bring my notes. So, the merchant fees are the fees that are charged to the city to cover the expenses of the processor. And that is oftentimes referred to as interchange fees and those are the fees that the, the banks are charging. And then we have the, the gateway fees, which we're not currently paying those, but oftentimes, and in the past, we have had that where you may have a merchant bank and then there's a third party that has a fee that they basically implement the technology to make it all work in the background. That's part of the fee. PCI compliance, again, in the past, before we had our current processor, we paid additional fees for PCI compliance, now that's something that our processor takes on. So your fees are sort of based on what type of processor you have, whether you're receiving full service. Our fees additionally, our payment provider, our processor, provides our electronic bill presentment, and, you know, the wallet for the customers to save their information and schedule payments, all of those things result in higher transaction fees than if we were to just use, like, Square, you know, and it was just strictly a payment processor. Square's not going to offer a customer portal and all those other options that our current These are the current financial impacts of our credit card processing fees. It seems that every year for the last several years, we've had to request more funds in the budget to cover processing fees. In FY '25, we have budgeted $336,000 for credit card processing fees, and you can see how that's grown just in the last five years, up from $205,000 in FY '20. And then if you go way back to 2010, before we really started pushing those electronic payment options, we paid less than $80,000 annually for credit card processing fees. So you can see how we start to think, okay, well, maybe it might be time to talk about doing some things differently. This is our current rate structure that we currently have. On all of our non-utility payments, this is credit or debit cards, the rate is still the same, it's 3.18%. So this would be our building permits, occupancy tax payments, fire inspections, any type of payment that a customer makes that's not a utility bill, is 3.18% is our fee. And then our utility bills for cars is $1.76. E-checks are 83 cents, which is pretty, pretty low, and then again, mentioning the increments, the $1,500 increments, those flat fees are based on $1,500 increments, so for every bit that you go into another $1,500, you're assessed another fee, and then we have a maximum fee of $25,000. Now for the utility card payments, the $1.76, it can be higher than that because there's something called non-qualified transactions, and this is where they say you're going to get a discount for a utility payment, and it's going to be $1.76, but if it's a card that is a commercial type card, or a card that has a high rewards, that are the cards that we want to have as consumers, then you're going to pay an additional amount for that. So, for example, in July, we had 450 of those transactions, and it was an additional $4,700 that the city paid in credit card processing fees for those people to.
Just because they had a special, special card that.
Yes.
Catch back type things, or?
Yes, and there's not a way, most of it is commercial cards, and so obviously, there's not a way for us to exclude, I mean, we don't even, even our processor really doesn't know what those rates are going to be until they get charged the rate, because those are part of those interchange fees. We do, we can limit, like, we don't take American Express, and that's one thing, you can just not accept that whole payment method because American Express is notoriously high for that, because they have great rewards, and, you know, the black card and all these things where, you know, those fees are going to be higher. So we don't accept American Express, but outside of that, you know, when it comes to Visa, MasterCard, we don't have a way to say, we're not going to take the TJ Maxx Rewards card, because we know you're going to get a bunch of points back for that, so. And we have five different electronic payment channels, so this means that we have five different sort of dashboards, or five different payment types that we're getting built on, and this is just to show you the annual volume and the count, and I won't go through all of these, but I wanted to show you that we have our utility payment channel, we have our occupancy tax payments, and then permitting and inspections has their own channel that they have, and then we also have Cry Wolf, which is our false alarm billing for PD. Those customers are able to pay online with a credit card, and then we have our miscellaneous dashboard, which, or miscellaneous channel, which again, is all of those miscellaneous payments, CD loans, fingerprints, fire inspections, and things like that. What I wanted to point out about this one, what I think is interesting is, because the permitting and inspections, you can see the dollar amount from 21 to 22, that's the volume, and from 350,000 to $903,000, and those are the payments that are percentage-based, so they're charging us the percentage, and of course, you know, in July, we had 181 building permit payments, and 12 of those were over $2,000. Some of those payments are very large, because of course, you know, if a contractor can call and pay, you know, that's just smart business to pay 25 or $30,000 on his card, and then he gets all those rewards back, and then we pay the fee for that. So for those 12 payments that were over $2,000, the city paid $3,085 for processing, just on that handful of payments, so it can, it can really add up on that side. Which brings us to convenience fees, and this is just some information on convenience fees and different places that are doing them, and how they're doing them, and then we'll talk about some places that are not. In 2023, there's a utility fee survey study done, the survey is done every year, it's not strictly just North Carolina, there was 109 respondents in 23, and about 50 or so were from North Carolina. He's the gentleman that does it is from North Carolina, and he advertises to us to get us to do it, but he also sends it out to people nationwide. But of those 109 respondents, about 103 accept credit cards, and almost 70% of those apply convenience fee to the, to the customer. They are applied in various ways, some are to online payments, some are to phone and IVR payments, and 43 of them actually apply it to in-person payments as well. The processor collects the fee for 63 of those 72 respondents, and that means that when the customer pays the bill, like, for us, our processors payment us, if you log onto our portal, it'll save power by payments, that means that, you know, we're going to, we have an agreement with them, and they're going to charge $2 or whatever it is, and then the fee, we're not going to have the fee, we're not going to collect it and have to give it back or anything like that. And then the utility charges the convenience fee for the remaining nine, so only a few people are doing that. Fees are all over the place in the survey, they range from $1.40 to $4.95 for flat fees, and then 2% to 5% for percentage-based. And then I thought I'd just show some examples of some different places that I looked at. I just simply went to some websites and tried to figure out what their different payment options and how they're charging. So in Payable, there's, they're doing a flat rate, $2.25 for those that are under 2,000, and then $10 for 2 to 10,000, and then after 10,000, they're switching to a percentage, 2.75%. They don't have any charge at the, if you pay at a self-service, they have one, the self-service kiosk, so if you pay there, you won't be charged at all, and they don't accept any credit card payments for walk-ins. New Bern, they charge $4.95 for all credit and debit card transactions online or IVR, 60 cents for an e-check, no charge for the ACH bank draft, and again, they do not accept credit card payments at all for a walk-in. And I will tell you that I think part of the reason for that is it's been a big discussion about if you're, if it's legal or right to charge a customer a convenience fee if they're having to walk in and make the payment. So some places are just saying, well, if I can't charge you the convenience fee, then we just won't take the payments in person. So they just, I think that's where the no, no credit card payments in person comes. Okay, Fair Public Utility, $3, and then no fee if they're using the e-check, and then no fee on the walk-in payment, so they do accept cards in person, but they don't charge a fee for that. And then I wanted to highlight some places that don't have convenience fees. Kentson does not, obviously, we do not currently, Alwasta does not, although it's interesting that they did have a fee of $3.50 all the way up until 2017, for a number of years they had it, but then in 2017, they were trying to encourage more customers to pay electronically and not come into the office, so they have removed their fee. Morehead City has convenience fees, Cary does not, Durham does not, but they have been considering them for a while now. Apparently, I think last year, they spent over $1 million in credit card processing fees, or maybe the year before, but it's something that they've been looking at, and then Greensboro also has none currently. So we have some different options, and obviously, one option is to continue the current practice of absorbing all of the cost. You know, those costs on the utility side are part of the water sewer rate model, so eventually, some of those costs are passed along in the form of the water sewer rates as an operating expense. It's a little bit different on the other side of things with the miscellaneous payments and the inspections and all of that, those really passed along that I know of, I don't think any of our inspection fees take into account what we're paying in credit card processing. Or we can choose to pass a convenience fee to the customer, we could do a flat fee, a percentage, base it on payment channel, there are a lot of different options that we could do. The main thing that I wanted to do tonight is sort of just get this in front of you as we're going into the process and considering what our options are, and before we move down a path, if everyone were to say, I never want to add convenience fees as a cost of doing business, and we'll keep going forward, then we'll know, you know, that's the direction we're going, or if there's some interest in possibly having a convenience fee, you think it's a good idea, bad idea, you want to see some different options, just to sort of get some feedback from you and to answer any questions that you might have, if I don't know the answer tonight, we can get them, you know, and obviously, I would come back with, if we decided to get on that path, with more specific options as we move forward.
Look at the options, I think, at this point, because it's only going to get worse.
But specifically in the utility side of things, you know, that's an enterprise, so it is the cost of doing business that gets rolled back in, or should get rolled back in as the cost of doing business there. When is the last time we rate shopped for non-utility rates? Like, how long has it been since we did a comparison of what we, you know, because that particular rate was pretty high?
Yeah, the last time that we went out for bids was 2015, and that's why I think, you know, looking at it now, we probably will do it, probably end up going out for bids again. We've looked at some rates throughout the years, there's a lot involved with, not saying that we wouldn't switch, but our contract was five years, so we had until 2020, I think, maybe it was 2016 by the time we signed the contract, but somewhere around that, and then it renewed for three years, so now we're in a three-year cycle. But because our current provider offers were really, you know, you get in deep, you know, we have them for our customer portal, they're also our IVR provider, so we just, we haven't had a need to go out until now, but I think I, we have put them on notice that we're, at least, I think we'll be getting some different rates, you know?
Them knowing that we're looking.
Yeah.
That they offer a better rate, we don't want to change portals and everything, but I would definitely.
But also, as we change the software, you know.
Is that going to move it?
Some of the vendors may not be working with some of the systems, so.
Yeah.
That may force some changes.
It might also be wise to not reduce, I know like the Apple Pay, Google Pay, and the swipe or scan and pay, those are all great, and you should work with any provider that's doing business today moving forward, but there might be some cause when we move to the new software system, if that can all be incorporated in there, we might can streamline the number of options available. I would personally love to see us not having data stored, payment data stored by the city, that last 900, you said 960 or something like that?
Yes.
We can get those last 960 into a different system, that changeover is a good opportunity to do that. It's, you know, we're changing systems, sorry, you have to migrate over here, it's a good opportunity to kind of massage that a little bit, but maybe we can reduce, you know, if there's fewer pockets, maybe the rate could be a little bit different and better, we'll see. But like Mr. Jackson said, we won't know if we don't look at it. I know on the consumer side, seeing that extra fee is never wonderfully popular, but one way or another, we're going to feel the cost, either it's added into the cost of doing business on the utility side, or it gets added into the permitting structure as a cost for the permit prices, because it has to be covered. So one way or the other, ultimately, whether we like it or not, I am a consumer, everything I buy, in any drive-through or grocery store, I am paying all of the credit card fees and every other kind of overhead, because that's what happens. Bottom line, we ultimately, the consumer, we pay it all, so this is going to happen one way or the other, it's just how palatable we, will the format be, is really what it comes down to.
I don't think you can keep eating that 300-some-thousand dollars every year, you know what I mean, it just, you gotta pass on in some capacity, or like you were saying with the cash, I mean, kind of everybody pay cash, but you can at least give a discount if someone's willing to mail a check in or however they want to do it, and we do that sometimes too, if people want to save a little money, it saves us money at the same time just to come and do it that way.
Would you be able to segregate, in other words, if somebody was making a utility payment, and you said we're already building that back into the rate model, and not charge a convenience fee, and then charge a convenience fee on all other transaction, credit card transactions, or whatever payment process that we have, would that be feasible?
Yes, you, you can charge based on the payment channels, so where I showed those five payment channels, so you could not have a convenience fee for utilities, and then you could have a convenience fee for permitting, or occupancy tax, or any of those.
I would be, just as further discussion, what are we paying convenience, convenience fees for utilities, and then by each of the other channels, just so we can see, you know, I guess philosophically, I have a problem with, with everybody, well, I guess I don't. I was thinking everybody, those who don't use a credit card are actually helping to subsidize those who do on the utility side, because we're all paying based on our usage, so therefore, I'm paying somebody else a share of their convenience fee if I don't generate any. But, you know, it's like any other expense, we all share in it whether we really use that directly or not, so, but I would be curious.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, it's true, I mean, you're right, there are some arguments that, you know, the people that don't pay the credit cards are sharing in the cost, but then there's the flip side of that, is that there's a cost to process in those payments for the people that aren't paying with a credit card, because you have the staff, you know, if people went away from paying the credit cards and pushed off that.
Right, you got, you got an offset, that was one.
Now you got a stack of 300 checks to process.
That was partly what my question went on earlier about, you know, are, the bounced payments, has that gone down by reducing the amount of checks, by reducing the amount of cash, you know, so forth? And we do get our money quicker under this new system.
Yes.
We do have less staff, that we, we don't need to be manning the staff to handle, handle all the money transactions.
Right, we've added a lot of accounts.
Right, so there is some savings that way, but you're right, there is some, obviously the expenses. When Durham, Durham's paying a million dollars, that's, that's pretty, that's very significant.
What do you think, paying a food line at Walmart? Same thing, all paying the same price, but it's.
Almost all of the restaurants are charging convenience fee, now that, that really, in the last two, two years or so, really since COVID, I've seen that really tick up, so.
Yeah, as a consumer, it's never fun, we've talked a lot about the places that we pay, you know, and I shared that recently, we had some work done at a repair place in town, and obviously, we had to pay a fee, and if you go there and you show up and your bill's, you know, seven or eight hundred dollars for new tires, and all of a sudden, you have to pay, I mean, I'm, most people aren't walking around with that kind of cash on them, and I don't know, I don't even, a checkbook, what, you know? I had to get out the credit card, and it killed me a little bit inside to pay that fee, so from a customer standpoint, I, I get it.
Well, you got other, you know, I'm having some, some repairs done on a house, and I got charged a labor tax, the legislature initiated a couple of years ago, it was over $300 just for the labor tax, you know, so, that's a, that's a shock, it was shocking to me, that's how much it got added by the legislature, so.
Yeah, on service calls, we have to charge that.
Mayor, on this, we had two real impetus for the discussion. The first, as Sabrina pointed out, is the ERP, and looking at what options do we want to start building into the system, kind of like where Mr. Wardens talking, if there's areas where we want to have the button clicked, so we have that option versus area where we wouldn't want to have it clicked, we need to know that as, as this team is building. building. The second thing is the number sheet. I looked at Mr. Wardens, and I said, that's, that's the money shot right there. You're seeing about 411% increase over the last 15 years, from that $79,000 to $336. I think, I think that's about 411. That's a big increase. And if we see that on anything, then it's one of those areas where, as we've talked in previous budgets, when we're looking at trends, those are things that we highlight, that we bring to the council, just like the numbers that Chief Tomlin gives us in terms of a $400,000 increase on an engine. Well, this is the same number. So when we see these things, whether it's the cost of doing business, or whether it's the cost of the delivery of services, those are policy decisions that council has to consider. And, and this is another year-over-year type of policy, where as we go into the process this year, it'll be a specific item that we're gonna ask for that direction, because if council does decide to change the policy, then we would look to implement on a, on a July 1 type of process, or even to articulate back within our budget message that says, this is something that if we don't change them, this is how council's chosen to do this. And maybe it's one of those dialogues that you offset with citizens when they ask about the expenses of living in a community. So it's just that dialogue that our citizens need to hear, and that council has to think about policy-wise, where we're gonna go next steps.
So, Sabrina, all right, I have my, I have someone coming in to make the order bill to average about what?
The new minimum bill is $88.
$88, there. $90, and they're gonna pay for it? What was the percentage for? I'll do.
Well, if you did a flat fee, let's say you did a flat fee of $2, Mayor.
Yeah, right now, the $1.76 is about 2%. So if you charged a 2% fee on that, $88.21, it's about the $1.76.
We don't do a, you, you mentioned that utility is, gets a reduced rate by your processors. But we do a, we do a roll-up bill where you pay stormwater and, and, you know, garbage collection and so forth. Does that still count as a utility?
Can you put that slide back up there again, with that breakdown? Move this way back?
Lisa's gonna have it.
Lisa's looking for it.
No, no.
No.
The rate breakdown.
The rate breakdown. There, that's not it.
It's a couple more, Lisa, I think it's got the flat fee, and the percentage, and the e-check.
Utility fee, right down.
Yeah, one of the comments that she's getting there.
There it is.
There you go.
That's what I'm saying, Mayor, if you, if you think about just your, your standard utility bill, if you had a $2 fee, which would cover that $1.76 that Sabrina's talking about, then on the year, that's $24 per customer. So that's the year. And if you went back to, if you did it as a two-percenter based on that bill, then you're looking at a little less than the $24, you're looking at $21, $22, as Sabrina pointed out. On the high end, for a larger bill, not the average bill, but let's use that $150 bill someone pays in a month. That's where the higher end for a residential user, that's gonna be about $36 a year if you're looking at that lower 2%. So again, it's, it's a new number on top of something, which goes back to the point Mr. Wardens making. You're already paying some of that within that bill structure, but it's not a number, we're not talking $100, $200 a year. It's definitely an impact as we look at the individual bills, but it covers.
I think breaking it down like that simplifies it a little bit, and it would be sellable at.
Justify it.
Right. This including commercial utility accounts or just residential?
Yes, it's.
If they pay?
Except the ones who use the bank's cards.
Right, and some of the utility commercial accounts, that's where it gets tricky, because they do charge us an additional fee on top of the $1.76, because they're non-qualified transactions.
Well, they're not gonna give points to them at the same time.
Yeah, yeah.
They're all gonna pay one way or two.
Right, it'll catch back.
But when I do come back with the specific, the different options, I'll give you some options, and then, like we do with the water sewer rate model, we'll show the impact on the utility bill, on the minimum.
And you'll see, the majority of it's gonna impact the utility side of things, but there is, as Mr. Wardens said, there is the general fund side as well that's gonna have some type of impact. And when you're absorbing those costs, that's where I would argue that you're subsidizing some of the other general fund operations, because you're, you're not built into that structure. And I think that was the point, just like Mr. Sosa said, if he's paying a recreation fee for his son, then he's paying this amount, and we had the conversation, there are definitely fewer people that are going in to pay recreation fees now, because when you started, back in the day, you would advertise, we've kicked off basketball season, meet us at Jack Emmy on Saturday morning, bring your $20, fill out your form. Now, it goes on Facebook, and you click the link, and you fill it out, and you pay the fee.
Unless you click the link an hour later and it's already sold out.
And then you're, then you don't have to pay anything, because you're already sold out.
You save some money.
That's right, as long as you're slow in responding, then. So I think that's the mix, Mayor. We don't, and Sabrina doesn't have a recommendation that's on the screen. What we want to do is, based on your advice here, we got the direction to, to bring back some of those numbers. I agree with you, Mayor, trying to show people how it actually impacts us, just like with your property tax. You don't know how that impacts you until someone says, my property's worth $10,000, what's it gonna cost me a year? When we see rubber meets the road, then that's where it impacts our, our wallet, and how you have to think about the fee schedule.
That's what our citizens are gonna want to see.
I'm just concerned, I don't know, is it float that utility payment, because they could barely make it on that, on that credit card.
Now you throw another $2, I mean, but something has to be.
Well, when you think about it, too, think about the comment about Walmart, the Walmart pay. I never knew this happened until this year, and I talked to a customer. And so they, they went there, they paid the, the fee there for Walmart, but then Walmart gets it to us in 48 hours or something, depending on it. So they've got to make sure it gets to us on time, or else then the customer gets a fee. So they paid, they paid a $2 Walmart fee, and they didn't pay anything to us, or they paid through a bank who paid it, and they're already paying. But, but what the challenge is, is if I pay it there, maybe I'm paying a percentage, or how do I keep it? We need to educate our customers about how you're paying your bills, because you do have to make a pick. And we have people that are, that are choosing which bills get paid now, and which time they're paying it. And I think that's the challenge for council always.
And we could, we could send out in, in the billing, you know, here's how you can switch to a, a lower, right, as an A B based convenience fee or whatever, you know, maybe that's something we might, might want to talk about if we, as we go forward on this thing.
Right, and that's why I think a lot of the structures of the other places are, you know, if you pay by e-check, it's a lower fee, or if you come in to the office, there's no fee at all, which of course, then you're driving people in. But I do want to put out, not necessarily a plug for Walmart, but we have had some issues with the customers that pay at Walmart, because it does take a couple of days. But I just found out today that they've made some improvements to the process, and they've made a partnership with our payment processor, so that going forward, and I don't know exactly when this is going to start, but they will be able to accept credit card payments at Walmart for your utility bill, and it will be real-time, just like you made the payment to us. They, and also, they accept, I don't know if you've heard of these things called U-cards, but they're from United Healthcare and something, I don't really know how it all works, but you can use these cards to pay utility bills, which has been a little bit of a nightmare, because apparently, the card pays us, but then, I don't know, we have to wait for United to say. It, it just presents issues when customers are trying, usually when customers are trying to pay their utility bills like that, they need to pay it today, you know? So Walmart is actually gonna be able to accept those payments. I guess they've reached a deal with United, too, and they'll be able to.
I've got me a new card, I'm gonna try and pay it.
Let me give it to her, we'll just.
Yeah.
But that U-card, you know, Mayor, when you look at that smorgasbord of how we accept payments, the goal is to give everybody an option for how they can do it. That U-card's real interesting, because it, it refills the, monthly. And so it's just like getting, getting a bank check or something. When it comes through, if you can use the U-card at the Walmart Pay Center, it may help you decide, I can pay my utility bill. Now, you may not be able to do it for something else, but you're paying your utility bill, which you couldn't use that card at the other payment locations. So you wouldn't be able to bring Mr. Wardens' library card in to pay it, but that U-card would work. And so I think Walmart's a really good option, because they're trying to find ways to help people meet that need using a revenue source that they have. And I think that's the level that the council has to consistently think about now, is, because originally, I would say, let's cut down on some of the payment methods, it seems tricky, but I think it's needed.
Golly, I didn't realize there were so many options.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy, that's part of that dialogue, so.
That's what I, thank you.
Do you, you accept all of those, all those payment options?
No.
Walmart, you don't either?
You don't, you don't accept library cards, do you? I accept them, frankly.
Thank you very much, Sabrina.
Thanks, thank you.
Mr. Manager, you have some more to say?
I do, I have a couple of items I'd like to share with council, Mayor. I'm gonna act like the clicker's working, just so you know it. The fire department worked through an awesome back-to-school supply, and they donated, they took some items to the Ansla Women's Shelter this past week. You're gonna see members of our team there. This is an awesome thing. A lot of the challenge, we talk about these expenses, and you talk about going back to school, you know, all the time, the, the mental health of going back to school, A, having a backpack, B, being able to take supplies. This is an incredible give-back for our community, because it allows us to, to fill bags and give these kids what they need to, to have to get back into class, and to feel, you know, that they have everything that they need to be successful for the year. You know, part of our thought process is, if you're ready on day one, you're gonna be ready for the whole entire school year. So we hope that, that the smiles on the faces of this team here are just a start of the impact that they have on the, on the kids as they're going back to school. I think that's an awesome partnership. We, we talk about partnerships all the time, but it really makes it happen. So to Chief and his team, great job for getting out there and making it happen. Last week, we were able to attend the Public Safety Awards. Not only did we attend, we had multiple people that received awards. You're gonna see on this first slide, you're gonna see, and this was presented by the Chamber of Commerce, you're gonna see Firefighter of the Year, Nicholas Bowles, he's gonna be on our right side there with Chief, and then you're gonna see Telecommunicator of the Year, Danine Green there on the left, not with Chief, but you see our people with the badges. Very proud of these individuals for being awarded for the year, but the best part is, they were recognized by their peers for their service. We also had, we had five others that were honored or recommended through the year, nominated. We have Fire Lieutenant Getz, Telecommunicator Schuler, Police Officer Guzman, Police Officer Ricardi, and Police Corporal Phantom Miller. So all of our people were recognized by someone within their, within their trade for a job well done. And then, as we said with the first slide, two of those individuals received the Member of the Year, which I think's an awesome credit to, to our organization, to the mission, values, and goals of service, and then to both police and fire, and our telecommunications team for stepping up and serving our community. So great job to those individuals for being recognized within their, within their trade. And the last one, Mayor, for some of us were able to be there, the Monford Point Marine Observance. We had over 30 families of Monford Point, Monford Point Marines who were presented with the Congressional Gold Medal, presented to the first African-American Marines. Very exciting. Mayor was there to give a speech, it was fantastic job, Mayor. We also had multiple people, we had the Monford Point First Sergeant William Jack McDowell, he gave a speech as well, so if you're there, you'll know how great those speeches were together. Special thanks to Camp Lejeune and to the Jacksonville TDA. The mayor was, you see pictured here, he was able to give the TDA Challenge Coins to the Monford Point Marines that were in attendance. I think there were 10 or so there that you actually spoke to individually. What a great, it's not just a great turnout, but it's, it's a great time for people to be together to appreciate our Monford Point Marines, whether they, they served decades ago, or whether they're there now. The stories that we heard on that day continue to resonate throughout the souls of the community, and definitely through the people that serve. It's great to see the remembrance. And as we talk about it, other ceremonies, we remember, because these people paved the way for us in Jacksonville. It's, it's an awesome ceremony, and I look forward to, to being there again next year. That's what we have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, I would then take a motion to go into closed session to discuss special matters under General Statute 143, 318, Page 1.
May I make one public service announcement before we do?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but on September 11th, we have Patriot Day Observance that is facilitated by Civic Affairs. It's open to the public, and all are welcome to join. It's at 8:00 a.m. on 9/11 at Lejeune Memorial Gardens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, now I need that motion, I have to.
So move it.
All right. All right. All right.